Just abandoned properties?
They are tax titled properties, so which means that the town owns them. So they'll be unoccupied, necessarily abandoned, but certainly unoccupied.
So we haven't looked at the residential?
I think they're undeveloped, actually. The properties are all undeveloped properties, aren't they?
Properties are all undeveloped.
Yeah, okay.
Many of them have at least one abutter who actually has a home on it. Some have vacant parcels next door. But that is, but they're all down at Clark Shores.
This first round's gonna be kind of a proof of concept. We're just trying to get see the process gets work. This is a very new thing for the town to do.
And then when we're talking about regulating residential use of exterior space, should this be time bound? I mean, I could see if somebody is putting building materials or whatever in anticipation of building an extension, building a shed, but they bought the lumber when it was priced better and aren't going to get around to building it until sometime later.
So they won't be permitted in that case yet because they haven't, because they just?
At some point, what they're building would be permanent, but the material could be there for a period of time. As I was saying, should we be time bound somewhat?
That's a good point.
Yeah, that's true. I guess I'm really thinking about that.
Yeah.
And then just one last one real quick, and this is really for my information. You talk about Lakeville contains so many residential properties, commercial properties. What qualifies you as an exempt property? Of which we have 199 of them.
Those are properties that are owned by the town.
Or church.
Okay.
Or the state. Or the church or the state, or yeah.
Okay.
Churches or state.
Okay, thank you.
I think there's a federal building in town too. Jack, you got anything?
I just reiterate just what Nora said. I was concerned about exempt properties.
Yep.
You reiterate what Mark said about multiple vehicles on a property in as far as old farmhouse or farms. I'd just be concerned not so much it's an old farm, but more that it's one of these barns that's, you know, you see they're just deteriorating
Right.
and collapsing. That's what should be removed out of it.
Yeah.
Yes, agreed.
Okay. So thank you for the presentation. We appreciate it. We appreciate you taking our comments. Are you guys sticking around for any discussion?
We'll stick around.
We do have some of those articles that you've proposed.
Sure, the first two articles, I believe, are on the agenda tonight. Yes.
We shall withdraw to the audience, but yes, we'll be here.
So item, I don't know if that's, 2A is the article. The town would vote to amend the zoning bylaw, section 4.0, use regulations. And this is for junk car dealers. So basically it would make it no longer acceptable in residential, only in business zone. Anybody have any comments on that?
No.
Mark, are we motioning to?
No, this was, the first, the first two articles were really for information and discussion purposes. The board of, the select board, after their next meeting, after they discussed this, may vote to place it on the warrant, at which time they would forward it back to us
Hold a public hearing at that time.
For public hearings, along with whatever else we forward to them, so.
So the second article, see if the town would vote to amend the Lakeville zoning bylaw by adding to section 2.0 definitions reusable materials or equipment, which would used yard maintenance equipment, tools, car parts, wood, metal, bicycles, toys, furniture, excluding farm equipment. And then with the clarification under that, that on residential property, outdoor storage of reusable materials or equipment shall be kept in one area and shall be, shall not exceed 500 square feet. The storage area shall be screened from view from the street and abutters' properties. No reusable materials or equipment shall be stored in any front yard, whether screened or not. I guess my only concern with that, when you say no reusable materials, it doesn't clarify the 500 square feet.
So placement and the storage. You know, storage is a different matter because they're semi-permanent basis, I think is the idea. And that's consistent with the other actions of the bylaws, for example, you know, automobile.
Yeah, I wouldn't include automobiles in this just for the fact that if you're?
I would say automobile too.
There goes my original point of a bicycle in the front yard.
Right, but if they're bicycles kids use.
That's not storage.
That's not storage and, you know, and the little, if you have little kids and you leave the tricycles.
It does it right out front.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, that's, I'm just being devil's advocate. I hate to, you know, if it continues on and like I say, you get a whistleblower that keeps complaining about the three bikes and they say that they never moved. It becomes an enforcement issue for the town that they have to deal with. It might be just disgruntled neighbor or?
So perhaps we should look at the defining storage. What it means to store something.
Put a term on, yeah, something, maybe.
And actually, Mr. Chair, I mean, the wood, so I mean, that could be people's heating wood, right? If it's just wood, it's not building supplies or lumber or anything specified, it's just wood. So I mean, a lot of people do, you know, if they keep their, their wood stored in their front yard, I don't think that's something that should be included.
Yeah, I was gonna make the same point. The wood I use over the winter certainly will exceed 500 square feet in storage.
We could, we could suggest that would be changed to lumber.
You're going to find the what construction materials?
Yeah, construction materials, yeah, because there's other things that people can collect that can be scattered all over properties.
I mean, I guess you could argue that if you're building a lot of cabin, wood is. There's a certain basic, you know, cabin sense here.
Can I be good with that one?
Yep.
Okay. Next item is 2C, to see if the town would vote to amend Lakeville's own bylaws to add to section 8.0 administration, planning board associate member. There shall be one associate member recommended by planning board and appointed by the select board. The associate member shall sit on the board for a purpose of acting on a special permit applications in the case of absence, inability to act, or conflict of interest on the part of any member on the planning board, or in the event of a vacancy on the board. Any renumbered? The remaining of the section accordingly. So we did talk about this, I think, at our last meeting. We had the concern of term, and it's not in here.
Right.
We didn't want it to be.
So I had sent, I had sent what we had last time to town council. And this is what they sent back, saying that it really should only apply to special permits because that's what the statute is specific to for alternate members. So that's why.
We didn't argue about special permit. We only talked about that we felt that the term of the appointment should be limited to a year at a time
Right.
and not exceed two years, so that it wasn't somebody that was just taking the position and never gonna run for planning board because we talked about it being a potential feeder position for somebody to join the planning board. And if they were just gonna try to stay as an associate member in perpetuity, it potentially takes that spot from somebody that maybe wanted to throw their hat in the ring for the associate position for a year.
What we can add in?
Either you just limited it to a one-year term and the planning board would make a recommendation to not reappoint. I just think that there should be a term put on it, is all. Do you agree with that, Peter?
Yeah, rather than say two years max, because no one's exactly knocking down the door. So if you do get somebody who's interested and it's working out well, then you could go beyond two years, you know, in such a case. And rather than kick somebody out who's, everything's working smooth.
Yeah, so just to make it an annual appointment or something like that.
We can adjust that for a sentence. So there shall be one associate member recommended by the planning board and appointed annually by the select board. The remainder would stay the same.
2D on our agenda is in regards to the Mullen Rule. Mark, you had brought to our attention about us adopting the Mullen Rule. You gentlemen being here tonight, I don't know if you could speak to it, but I know during the last special permit hearings that the planning board had, council had recommended, because we did have one or two members miss a meeting. And so council recommended that they have Lillian get a paper out that would Mullenize them. And they basically had to watch the meeting that they missed and swear that they did, you know, bring themselves up to speed on that so that they could vote without issue. So that was performed. I guess I'm wondering, did the town already adopt the Mullen Rule? Or is that just the way that that was handled was an option?
I think there was, Mr. Chairman, I think that was under the law that you, if somebody missed a meeting, they had the opportunity to catch up and then, you know, participate in the meeting further if they wanted to.
Right, in which?
That exists today's state law, what I am saying.
In which council used the term, they needed to be Mullenized when we did it. So like I say, I didn't know if the town had already adopted the Mullen Rule and we just, this is sort of a redundancy or?
No, no, the town has not adopted the Mullen Rule. I've gone through with Lillian and it was never adopted. So it needs to be adopted in order for it to truly be effective.
The Mullen Rule is pretty specific to implicit adjudicatory hearings. That's it. So, yeah.
Yeah, and usually it's adopted for specific boards. So it would be for specifically for the zoning board, the planning board, and the conservation. And we've sent a memo to the other two boards. But if the, they haven't met since we sent the memo out, so.
Okay, does anyone have any comments on that one?
No.
So at this point, we'll wait to hear back from those boards and?
Well, this is, this is the thing. This is your last meeting in order to vote to place articles on the warrant.
So I guess, so then my question will be,
Unless you do a special meeting.
If it's board, if it's board specific or if it's group specific based on the documentation that I read through? If I made a motion to approve adopting the Mullen Rule,
Yes.
I'm gonna do it by the planning board only. I have no idea what the actions of those two boards will be.
That's, we could do that, or we could do it pending, you know, adding select board. And the select board could amend it to add conservation and zoning board should they choose to.
Got that, Ari?
Yep.
All right, so I move to have the planning board adopt the Mullen Rule. And then pending the decision of the zoning board of appeals and conservation commission to adopt or decline, then said articles would be appropriately put on the warrant to cover that action.
Second.
Have a motion in the second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Since we've taken action on the Mullins Rule, the previous article on the associate member with the amendment?
Yep.
To be an annual appointment?
Yes.
Do you wanna add, do you wanna vote to put that on or?
Yeah, so I move to add the associate member zoning bylaw change to the recommendations of the town warrant to the board of selectmen with the amendment to make it a one-year appointment of that associate member.
Second.
I have a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay, so 2E, we had, I had brought up a while back. I talked to Mark the other day about this, so he came up with two quick draft options for, my suggestion would be in small or non-conforming business zoned lots to give a little bit of relief in one setback. This is something that I've talked to several engineers and they said that that would be a benefit to commercial development if they could, without a big problem, reduce some of the. I think engineers would want to see all the setbacks reduced, but I didn't want to open the floodgates and I felt like if we removed or reduced one side setback, that would allow the building to be shifted over and parking could be around one side of the building in the rear or to make a small lot more conforming to good business use. So did everybody get a chance to read these two options?
Yes.
I think right out of the gate, I want to strike industrial from that because we don't want to reduce the industrial setback. But we need to change the word "commercial" to "business" in both options. Outside of that, I'm gonna let Peter, if you'd like to go first, and let me know what you think about option one.
So reduced by, option two, well, option one, if we're, if we're changing it from "commercial" to "business" and no industrial, then I'm, I'm in, I'm in favor of it. I'm totally okay with that.
I'm just, I'm gonna read it out loud so everybody here can know what we're doing here. It would be add 5.2.8. In business districts, one side or rear yard setback on non-conforming lots may be reduced to 10 feet by special permit issued by the planning board. This may be only granted if the applicant show to the satisfaction of the board that the reduced setback is necessary to allow for the most desirable and efficient site design due to the non-conformity of the lot. And Mark, the only thing that I would add to this, whether it be option one or option two, is I think we had actually talked about it has to be abutting another business property. It can't be abutting a residential property to reduce the side setback because there are the screens and things required.
Okay.
So we need to make sure that it's abutting. The reduced setback has to be abutting another business property.
Now, here's the question. Another business zone property or a property that's used as business? Because we have residential properties in business zones, so.
I still think we have to keep a certain space if it's a?
If, if, if it's currently residential, then they get to keep their right as residential, you know? It's not.
I would just keep it clear it's a zoned business.
Yeah, I would too.
It just keeps us off the slippery slope of a pre-existing use or for a neighbor. So the other option would be add, in business districts, side or rear yard setbacks on non-conforming lots may be reduced by 50% by special permit issued by the planning board. This may be only granted if the applicant show this, to the satisfaction of the board that the reduced setbacks are necessary to allow the most desirable, efficient site design due to the non-conformity of the lot. And I'll just clarify, the 10 feet in the first option reduces from 40 feet or the 50% would be again from 40 down to 20.
That's correct. But, but option two gives you the flexibility of waving down two different setbacks, like the side and the rear. So maybe because of topography, ledge, outcropping, whatever, you could push the building location to the, let's say, a back corner or closer to the front corner of the property, so.
Would they both say side or rear?
Yeah, I mean, not front, side, or, yeah, to one of the back corners.
Yep. So it basically boils down to, does the board want to see potentially down to 10 feet? Or it would be down to 20 feet with option two?
I'd rather the 20.
Michelle?
I'm just thinking if, you know, if, if there's, if that means that there's gonna be two egress real close to each other, I think the 20 feet would be better.
Two, two what, right?
Egress.
Right near each other? Okay.
So if there's turning traffic, I think 10 might be too close.
Nora? I look at 20 feet's a good option from the planning board standpoint and they could always go to the zoning board of appeals if they needed more.
Correct, and that's what I was going to say as long. We also ordered here that it must have but another business zone.
Yeah. Jack?
20.
Want to just change it to 20 and then add abutting business zone property on that side?
Well, are we going with number two for side and rear or only on one?
Well, one says side or rear also. It just says 10 feet clearly where the other one says 50%. So to me it's, you can keep it at 50%.
Neither of these say side and rear.
They don't?
Yeah, the second one says.
They say side or rear.
Side or rear, so they don't get to, they don't get to work it so far into a.
Ah, I see, okay. I thought the second one was gonna be both, but I didn't change that.
Did you, did you want to do, give the option of side?
That's what I was saying, in, in the second one, I was gonna say, give them the option of doing both, either the side, both the side and the rear, but only, only go to half.
The challenge, I think, with the rear though, is a lot of the business properties abut residential in the back.
Yes, they do.
Right.
And so you'd be giving them that relief. We're kind of, are talking like we don't want them anyway, so.
Okay.
I don't mind if you had the option of either or,
Right.
but I think it's still gotta be towards a business zone property.
Yes.
And I think that's a good clarification. So if they did have the option of business behind and that worked for them, that's fine.
Mm-hmm. You want me to read that second one?
Yeah, because we could act on that right now, correct?
Yep.
Yep.
So in business districts, side or rear yard setbacks on non-conforming lots may be reduced by 50% by special permit issued by the planning board. Okay, so it should be, in business districts, side or rear yard setbacks
Can I just?
Abutting.
One. I think you missed the word.
Other, what?
I think you missed the word one, one side or rear.
Okay, yeah, one side or rear yard setback. Abutting other business zone properties on non-conforming lots may be reduced by 50% by a special permit issued by the planning board. This may only be granted if the applicant show to the satisfaction of the board that the reduced setbacks are necessary to allow for the most desirable and efficient site design due to the non-conformity of the lot.
So moved.
Second.
So I have a motion in a second to present that article to the board of selectmen for the warrant for all town meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously.
Mark, did you, I'm sorry, um, did you? You took the wording from the second one, right? Is that, rather than the first one? Because you kept the, he kept the 50%. He didn't do 20. So I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, he did.
So it was?
50%. Item 2F, modify section five. So I'm opposed to the removing the language, no more, the one principal structure. I think that needs to stay in there. Does anyone else have an opinion on that?
I agree.
I agree. Peter?
Yeah, that's fine. I'm trying to think of instances where we have properties with two principal structures in town.
Dewey's in the bowling alley.
Like, there's a retail plaza up in Main Street that has like a building on the right and then you drive between them and then there's a long building on the left. You know, you see that kind of design in bigger retail areas that they put pad side out front, where they have multiple buildings and structures.
Do you want to reinstate that strike line? Is that right?
Yeah, I don't want it to be stricken.
Okay.
I just think that, so, it, it's just one of those things that you potentially run the risk of usurps the zoning that we have with the 175 feet of frontage for a building and then all of a sudden you put two on it because it's just allowed as long as it meets the setbacks and the lot coverage. So.
It's fine by me.
I don't think we would gain a ton by that.
I don't see it being an issue too often either, really.
Okay. Okay, so we're gonna leave in and not strike that line, modify lot coverage. So this has been on our agenda a couple of times and I just want to make sure that section 5.1, residential lot coverage is 25%. It still says in here, 50, 50, and 50 are all crossed out and it's gonna be 70% by right, which we've always had 50% by right and then the additional 20% basically through waivers, through the density bonuses. So I guess we need clearer language if we're gonna do this by special permit. We need the special permit language because we're just, we're removing a bunch and only changing the lot coverage because we're striking out the whole density bonus and the large-scale, big-box design standards. And I know that we've put in place design standards in the site plan review bylaw that we adopted in the Springtown meeting, but I kind of think that this has taken too much out and not added a little bit back in.
I mean, I could write specific standards that someone would have to meet to be able to achieve 70%. Sort of similar, I mean, I think a lot of what's in here is that's in the current density bonus section is you don't need anymore, which was the whole point of removing this. But if you'd like to put, add some specific standards for someone, you know, besides your regular, you know, what you review on the site plan review, I mean, we can add back in a few, a few specific goals or standards.
One question mark.
Maybe not, not design, you know, you have to have so many windows or?
So did we discuss going forward, the industrial be increasing that to 70 at any time? Because unless we have. So did we discuss the going forward, the industrial B increasing that to seventy at any time cuz unless we have to because of industrial and business, I I really would be against increasing their um their land coverage. I mean, we were about five minutes away from removing industrial B completely, so I certainly wouldn't wanna increase it. I don't wanna take it away from the people who have it, but uh I I would be against even proposing it going to seventy.
Yeah, I I actually do think that we probably did talk about that, so I would say on that industrial B mark, we won't.
I'm okay with business and industrial.
Probably just not even give the option of seventy on that.
Okay.
And just that one's gotta stay at fifty percent and then so I I and again, I I think that we're in a lot better shape than we were a year ago with the changes that we made at spring town meeting to site plan review. Uh I'd like to continue to work on this, but I don't wanna put something together that's kind of slapped together.
Okay.
So can is this something we could just continue to work on with and not force it for this warrant?
Yeah, we have, there's there's a long warrant already for the fall town meeting, so uh we can make these adjustments and now I'll have time to kinda maybe add a couple of specific uh goals that someone has to try and achieve in 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 order to receive the higher density.
All right, so I think we're probably gonna have a lot of public hearings coming up and stuff, so I'd like to just continue this until do you want me to just leave it up to your discretion once we get through some stuff to put it back on the agenda?
Once we get past the the fall town meeting, we'll we'll put it back on for um.
Spring.
Yeah, for exactly.
All right, so I move to continue this discussion until the next agenda after town fall town meeting uh to continue working on this for spring town meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'm gonna jump around a little bit here, we got some folks here that I'm sure not wanna watch us do all this and got a big packet here for Mr. Turner. Come up and join us briefly. Uh so we've got Ledgewood Drive, uh you're looking for road acceptance at the upcoming town meeting. Uh Mark, you and I spoke about this the other day, um environmental partners are supposed to go out and take a look, but they hadn't had a chance to get out there, I think, before tonight's meeting.
That's correct.
Uh they were out there in tw- early twenty-one.
Correct.
And it was satisfactory, but a little bit of time's passed, so my understanding is the highway superintendent wanted another review just to belt and suspenders. Uh so that's in process, this is really our last opportunity to vote on this before fall town meeting. So I've talked to Mark about it and I'd like to make the recommendation that we approve this pending a satisfactory inspection from uh environmental partners and that if anything does need to be corrected, it is corrected by Mr. Turner prior to.
I'll second that.
So I have a motion and a second to approve and recommend approval of this roadway at fall town meeting, uh all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your patience.
No problem.
All the other smiling folks in the back, I'm gonna jump to, we have a uh application of approval for a preliminary plan for forty-four Clear Pond Road. Don't remember his name, uh Rick Freiberg
Yes.
has represented that project on behalf of the applicant. They have provided us with a plan that does show a subdivision with a roadway uh in two parcels, so it does meet the requirements of the preliminary plan showing a subdivision. Does anybody wanna come up and make any comments regarding this property tonight?
If you would like Rick Fireberry, I can call him and put him on the mic if you think it's necessary, he could not make it like I said.
Understood, let's go call, yeah, we'll go through the planning board. Mrs. Nielsen, would you like to come up and say anything?
Yeah, hi. Yep, just a question, uh Lois Nielsen, fifty-one Harcourt Avenue. So uh there was something that came out on Facebook, a question once again about where that right of way was going to be for this development. I thought we clarified that it was gonna be Clear Pond Road, not Harcourt.
That's correct.
Okay.
When we had discussed it, when uh Mr. Freiberg had talked to us on one of those previous meetings.
Correct, yeah.
He had asked the planning board, option one, option two, do you want it just to come in as a cul-de-sac? Or do you want it to connect to Harcourt? We said we just wanted to go in straight as a cul-de-sac and that's the option that was brought back to the planning board.
Okay.
So what they had proposed is not go through and touch Harcourt.
Good, good, okay. And so this preliminary plan, that's what it is. There's no definitive of what this is gonna be as far as.
They will be required to put in a definitive plan within seven months of this plan being filed with the town.
Okay, and at this.
So I'm gonna say April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, this was dropped off, received in at the town clerk's office, so if you wanted to add seven months to that, that's when we would expect between now and then to see a definitive plan if they're going to.
It was November, um there was a date in November.
Probably the nineteenth.
Yeah. November nineteenth.
Sound about right, Mark?
Yes.
Okay. It's so at this point, all we have is what we've seen before, which is just basically an outline of the entire.
That's it, yep.
Okay, and we have no indication at this point what it's gonna be as far as high density, we just don't know, is that?
That's correct, in in fact, I'll just restate it, they put right in the notes on their plan that ultimately they're looking to freeze the zoning of the Development Opportunities District, which would make me think that they're leaning towards warehouse. So we don't know that, but that's what they're trying to freeze with the zoning, that's what this action is doing.
Even though that D O D legally has been thrown out, kind of.
So far, but I'm told it's.
With an appeal?
Yeah, I think this appeal's going in both directions, so.
Okay.
I I plan I plan to approve this plan with the caveat that we're not making a zoning determination tonight.
Good, okay. And once that that subject of the zoning comes up again, depending the appeal and any it calls for a public hearing of some kind, is that correct or?
Well, yeah.
Definitive plan subdivision?
Yeah, so two things, one is in order to continue freezing the zoning, they would have to file the definitive plan within the next couple of months, right? But because it's a definitive plan, there would be public hearings, so everyone would know that they filed for that. And then, of course, if the appeal is in the favor of um and upholds um the D O D, then if they did move if they did move forward with that, that would require a public hearing and notifications. And if the D O D doesn't survive and they propose housing or they walk away and it continues to be a golf course, but if they propose something else, there would be public hearings, whether it's under site plan review for a different kind of commercial or um or or housing, a further subdivision.
We're sort of speculating on all the options.
It's been confusing, this whole thing for sure. All right, thank you, I think that helps.
Anyone else wanna say anything? Okay, uh does anybody on the planning board wanna make any comments before I make a motion?
No.
Okay, so I I move that we approve the uh preliminary plan as presented to the planning board with the stipulation that we're not making any zoning determination.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh Mark, if you just wanna let Rick know that we acted tonight and.
Yep.
Oh, I moved too many papers on my agenda. There we go. Rhode Island Road, one fifty-six Rhode Island Road, uh we received a request to continue by the applicant, did they uh give date specifics, Mark?
September twenty-second.
Yeah, till September twenty-second.
Okay, so I I move that we continue the one fifty-six Rhode Island Road until September twenty-second, twenty-second? At seven P M. Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. I'm gonna try and get a little bit more business done, we're on a roll here. I'm looking at the minutes for July fourteenth, twenty twenty-two for the planning board, uh.
I have a motion that we approved the minutes of Thursday, July fourteenth, as written.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second.
Discussion, just one thing, if we could just, I just read back on page four, the first paragraph, the that had spread that had been spread, could we just strike those four words and put a period after misinformation? I did go back and rewatched.
It wasn't said?
No.
So a period after misinformation and the last four words be stricken. So would you accept an amendment to your motion, Nora?
Yes.
Still seconding?
Second.
Uh motion to approve the minutes as drafted with the changes noted. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thursday, July fourteenth approved, I have July twenty-eighth minutes in front of us, this was a joint meeting between the Z B A and the planning board.
There's.
Jack, it looks like you weren't present for that one.
Yeah.
Uh any comments on this one?
So just there was just a typo on the seven P M, the zero is missing. And I didn't know on page six, the second to the last last paragraph, it did seem like it may have there may have been more, but I think it's just missing a period. Could explain the this to these other boards, I thought maybe there was something, but I went back, I watched and it wasn't.
So it's good?
Yes, but it just needed a period.
Okay, so I move to approve the minutes for July twenty-eighth with the change to clarify the time of start of the meeting. And all other minutes are fine.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, minutes are approved. So go back to industrial district map revisions. Which we have a plan in our packet.
Yeah, so I have a slightly more specific, I don't know who got the um with some with the meats and bounds. If you repeat that and then if you print it out like this.
Anybody have any uh comments, questions, concerns about this?
Well, yeah, where do I start?
Cut this off.
What is that, what is it that we uh that we're exactly asking to do?
We're uh so uh to see if the town would vote to amend the town of Lakeville zoning map by rezoning one fifty-five point four acres, one hundred fifty-five point four acres on County Street as shown on the attached map entitled zoning amendment of the plan of land in Lakeville from the residential district to the industrial district.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I do have a concern that this is very close to the schools, an industrial zone, so.
I guess my concern is the advantage that we had with this uh Development Opportunities District was by special permit, if we zone this industrial, it's by right. So basically, it's gonna be site plan review when it's approved.
But you do have a more beefed up site plan review now, that gives you a lot of authority to adjust site design, look at a whole wide range of.
But that doesn't help with traffic control or.
Yes, it does.
What doesn't, where where in there is gonna mitigate any increasing traffic, what controls we have in site plan review.
It would be required to mitigate any impact. Sure.
And I guess, do we have an interested party here that that hasn't spoken to us yet about this?
No, this is, this is um the property that Mohammed Atani has purchased, right?
Oh, I know that, I know what it is, yeah.
And Mohammed couldn't be here at tonight's meeting.
Okay.
So Rami Atani is here, he can answer any other questions.
All right. If I may?
Yes, please.
I do have a board with a large print of the plan, if you would like me to put it up, it's up to you.
Uh I don't think we require it, if anybody would like to see the look and you could put it where they could see it, but uh come right up to the mic and identify, but yeah, if you wanna bring it up, that's fine.
Rami Itani, Stonebridge Homes, um thirty-two Norfolk Ave, southeastern Massachusetts. Um so thank you for um getting us tonight. Um so this is the plan that uh it's a very preliminary plan that we're proposing for the property. This is.
And you're confused.
This is the parcel right here. Um so if I may just one moment, please. So um again, this is very preliminary, um but what we would like to do is the entire parcel is approximately three hundred acres. Um and uh what we would like to do is just rezone that portion, which is about one hundred and fifty-five acres, the shaded area that uh that is on here, um to industrial zone. The main uh access to the property will be through uh County Street. So we will have the access, you know, somewhere around here. Um and uh currently there is an access road that leads to the cell tower um which, you know, we would probably just keep that as a an access road um for the property. Most of the industrial building would be uh probably around this half right here where the large area is. And again, if I just may, sorry, I'm turning your back, so again, entry would be on this side. Work would be probably on this end right here and this would be just left alone. So again, you know, this would be just left alone and then this part is where all the industrial would be to go.
Industrial building or buildings?
Whatever, yeah, whatever the future plan is for the
Okay.
for the site. Um again, there is no uh real uh plans at at this point, uh we're just asking to ease on that part of the uh property. We're just asking to rezone that part of the, uh, property.
Mr. Chair?
Michelle, go ahead.
There's just questions on the adding button, I don't know if you're ready to take them yet.
Noel, if you could come up, would you let her, I'd like to make some comments and...
Hi, my name is Noel, I live on Roosevelt Ave. And, um, although this is not in my neighborhood, do I understand it right that this is the same developer for LeBaron?
Yes.
Okay. I have a couple of things to say, I don't think anyone is here from LeBaron, because, and I, pardon me? It's the same developer. Oh, hey, but it's different, and you're gonna have to listen and take...
I'm not listening to you, I'm just saying...
It's not your turn to talk, it's not your turn, you have to wait. Okay, I'm sorry. Now, I've attended some of the meetings where the people who live in LeBaron...
If you could direct your comments to me, ma'am.
Okay, okay. I've listened to some of the residents who live at LeBaron, and some of the things that I've heard have been horrible. There's this septic treatment, uh, whatever you call it in the thing, and there's an odor with it, and those poor people have to live with that, and I, I mean, that's just for starters, there, there's like building materials left out. I, I feel sorry for the people who live at LeBaron, I really do. And I would, I would not be enthusiastic about seeing something similar going in there.
I think the challenge right now is that we don't know what their plans are. You know, to even state whether it would be the same or not, we don't know what the plans are for the property. It may be the same developer as you're speaking, and I understand, uh, the concerns that you're talking about, but we don't know today what the plans are for that property.
May I, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, come right back up, please.
Just to make it very simple, uh, there was a meeting, uh, I believe last month, with the zoning board of appeals. Because, yes, we are the developers of, uh, LeBaron Hills. And there were some questions that came up. However, we truly feel that irrelevant, um, to the meeting, but this is neither here or there. We were in front of the ZBA to, uh, modify the comprehensive permit that was approved for the subdivision. These are two separate properties.
Understood.
There is really nothing, uh, you know, just to answer, you know, the, the resident that has concerns, and she feels bad for the, for the homeowners. Those are two different things. You know, we have a difference of opinion. But, again, this is a parcel that we're trying to rezone a portion of it into an industrial zoning, as opposed to keeping it residential.
Understood. You can't give us anything more to go on as far as it's, this is just speculative on whatever you develop would be for industrial development?
As in, like, what we would put on it?
Or, yeah, or even, you know, you've said buildings.
Building, yeah, I mean, it could be one way, so, honestly, I don't know, because we're still at the beginning, early stages. So, if, if, if we see and, and we feel that, that, the warehousing market may take two buildings, we may put two buildings, one big building, maybe one big building. It all depends on, um, how the building or the buildings, you know, in parentheses, the S in parentheses, is going to, 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 to make the site look... At the end of the day, we have to come up with a plan and come before you and present to you that plan. So...
And I guess what I'm looking for is to be enthusiastic about changing the zoning on something that, you know, it's entirely speculative, and I understand, as an, an investor and a developer, you ki- kinda have to see what's gonna stick, and you don't know. Apparently, you don't have a tenant in line to do this, or do you?
That's correct.
So, again, from, you gotta take it from our standpoint. We're basically spot zoning something, we have no idea what it's gonna be. You don't know what it's gonna be, so you're asking us to do something, you know, that we're, we're taking a chance on something that it's really a toss at the dartboard, as far as we're looking at. So, we was hoping to go on a little bit more there, you know?
I, I really can't commit to what we're doing. In today's market, there is a lot of warehouses that are, uh, attractive to a lot of big companies. In a year or two or three, with these market conditions, we don't know what's going to happen. So, I cannot give an answer, and I can, I cannot commit the company to say we're going to be putting warehouses and something changes. And I... Market conditions dictate what we do in our industry, whether it's commercial or residential. And, and that's, we have to look at that. You have a question?
Yeah, and, uh, so, the bounds that you have here in, in changing from industrial to residential, those are going to be two separate lots? You're gonna have that changed, currently?
I'm, I'm assuming that's, we would have to...
Is that how the engineer drew this? Do you know what I mean? Cause those aren't the bounds right now of this property, right?
Are you looking at the older version? No, that's one parcel, uh, so it's multiple parcels that made up...
Right now, it's multiple parcels?
That's correct.
And they chose one parcel?
Uh, well, no, this is for rezoning, so it's not, this is not changing any property lines. This is only rezoning the underlying land from residential to industrial. They would come in later for formers, for subdivisions. If they do multiple buildings, they, and they come in for subdivisions for smaller industrial buildings, or they come in for a site planner review for one big building. That, they would do that later. And, and that's why the second plan I passed out gives specific meets and bounds, so that the truly defines this area, because it's not according to property lines.
Okay, that answers that, thanks.
Michelle?
So, if there's two different zones for the same property, I believe, from what I recall from that storage unit discussion, they were only allowed to have one of the underlying zoning uses on that property, is that correct? So, if they zone this portion industrial, and they try to develop the whole parcel, they could either, they would have to pick either residential or industrial, is that correct? They can't do both on that same lot, is that correct?
Well, I think at that point, they'd have to change lot lines to mirror the zoning change.
Okay, so they would eventually change lot lines?
Could you attest to that, Mr. Itani? That if this zoning was changed by the town, they voted at town meeting to change, and it was a requirement in order for you to develop both sides of that industrial and residential line, that you'd have to change and make the bounds between industrial and residential? The property lines between two separate parcels?
So... And, and just, just to conf, sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just saying, this sort of was what I was getting at, is cause as I see this right now, it's one large lot. They merely just differentiated it with two zones, correct?
Well, there's actually multiple parts.
Five parcels there.
But they're not shown on here.
That's correct, because it's a rezoning.
So, yeah, they're not delineated, that's, that's your question.
Right.
Basically, what we would be doing is that shaded area would be, if you wanna call it recreated as one lot that would be industrial, and then everything else in the back would be, would remain residential.
You'd change that, make two parcels?
But, well, remember, we have different parcels, so, um...
Right, but...
Which I, so let's say there's a parcel, uh, you know, right here, that we would, you know, we would not touch that, because it's still residential. So, we would have to recreate, um, the plan to make it, to make just the shaded area as one parcel that would be, uh, so...
So, you'd be separating it from...
Yes.
The rest, and then that would eliminate the underlying zone use only?
But, but to clarify, everything else would remain residential.
Yep. So, other than that cellphone, that secondary access road that accesses the cellphone tower, what other access to Freetown Street will that residential zone have? Are you essentially blocking it at the present time?
So, there are, no, there are, today, there are, um, other, um, means of egress to the property or entrances, there is one here, there is one here, there's this one right here, and I believe there is one right here.
Okay. Yep.
Nora, do you have any comments?
No, not at this time.
Jack?
My love, Stephen is...
Yeah, you can.
Yeah, I mean, regarding some of the, an earlier comment was made about LeBaron Hills, I mean, I would refute those comments. I don't think it's germane to this subject here.
Not at all. So, any comments on, uh...
No.
The plan in front of us?
No.
Mrs. Nielsen, would you like to come up and say something?
Yeah, I just had a question, um, for, that, um, that if I could point out on this, this, I had a question about the distance between the back here and are these residential lots, homes currently here?
Yes.
Okay, I'm curious the distance between this industrial area and here.
Do you roughly know what that is?
So, um, yeah, there's, the closest point is, uh, 226 feet. Again, this is, um, approximate measurements. Here is 400 feet, and then this one here is 962 feet, this is 1500, and this one here, you go like...
I'm most concerned about, yeah, that.
Twenty, you know, 2500.
Okay, so the, oh, 200 here?
Yeah, yeah, 226, 226, at the closest point. Then you go 400, and then 962.
It's not a lot of distance there.
Mark, and this goes just to take it to a town meeting for a vote?
That's correct, right, this is to vote, uh, put it to the board, second to put on the warrant, for the town to vote on it.
Now, Mr. Chair, if I may, now, why is this being presented as a planning board item, rather than the applicant? Cause I think, you know, when we discussed it with, um, the Lakeville resident there who wanted to have some warehouse in the business zone, you know, we didn't, we weren't willing to bring it to town meeting for him. You know, he was told he would have to bring it to town meeting on his own, so I guess, you know, so we're willing to change this zone for this?
Not, not, nobody's voted on it yet, but I, I guess, so what you're asking is, do we, what's the appetite of the planning board, I guess, is what you're asking? And again, I voiced earlier on, my concern is that if we do just change it to industrial, it's not by special permit, uh...
And, and that's, when I think warehouse, industrial, big trucks, easy access to the highway, schoolchildren within half a mile or less, right at the rear of that property, so that, to me, is like, big red flag. But, I mean... I don't know, and you know, if they were to bring it to town meeting on their own, they'd have to get, you know, some signatures of residence, and, and that would mean that there would, there would be some support. So, I, I would suggest that that might be the best way for them to go.
So, I guess... Rich?
Uh, Rich, the camera's slick, boy. The, uh, planning board members, remember, Mark? Three years ago, I came to the planning board to talk about areas for commercial development and industrial development. And it's very, very important to the town. We can't continue running the town with residential properties. We had a hundred, a hundred houses, um, this past year for occupancy permits, okay? And, uh, that's becoming an issue because of schoolchildren and so forth and so on. This particular property is 300 acres, and this property has been for sale for years. It's just, you know, nobody's bought it, and if it was all residential, and it's 300 acres, why didn't somebody buy it, you know, for residential in this environment? So, if you look at the map, you know, you look at this property that we're talking about, this is a perfect location for commercial or industrial, it gets right on 140, you know, which has the access to the highway. 140 entrance is right at the entrance there on County Road, which is, which is a big thing. So, you know, if you look at the property, what he's proposing here, and you know, some of this property is not developable, because there's ledge, because there's wetlands and so forth. This also would give us the opportunity to say to the developer, when we get to that point, say, okay, you wanna do this and develop this? Put the other 100, other 150 acres, you know, in open space, you know, as consideration. But if we don't get some industrial, we don't have any room in any of our industrial parks, from the T station to our own industrial park, 144, there's nothing available in town. We get calls all the time, where can I put a business and so forth and so on? So, it's very, very limited. And we're gonna make a decision here at the town. If you don't want commercial, then you're gonna have residential, which is gonna be substantial, especially when you talk about 40B projects, so I think it ought to be considered and brought to town meeting, let them decide what they wanna do, but, our tax base is, uh, is, uh, gonna be hurting in the next two or three years. We're very fortunate with the number of houses, not that they generate tons of revenue, they cost a lot, a lot of money for kids and so forth and so on, I don't have to tell you, Mark, you know that, you know, as well as, as I do. And, uh, I don't see this as a major problem having to, to affect the schools, affect the, uh, traffic, you know, fires the schools, the school, the school, the school is not a half mile away, it's more than, more than that, Freetown Street, so...
Oh, Mr. Chair, if I may, I wasn't just referring to traffic. I was more about, you know, what could potentially happen to children.
Pardon me?
It was more about the children being in a close proximity to whatever development could go in here with huge warehouses and trucks and highway close by. And we, you know, children go missing all the time.
Children go missing?
Yes, so that would be my concern.
I don't know what, sure what that means, but, okay. But, but, I mean, this is a very, very important, what we're gonna do going forward. If we want commercial, if we don't want commercial and industrial, let's, let's put up a sign and say, hey, this is only a residential town, residential town. I mean, if, if somebody decided they were gonna develop this for residential or 40B project, do you know how many units? I'm not, I'm not talking about probably half this, how many units could go in there? Huge, huge units, that's a concern to me, thank you.
There's no public waters quite there, though, is there, Rich?
No, there's not.
Yeah, so it's gonna be a challenge for anybody, both there.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, really quick, again, the entrance is to the main side will be on County Street.
Yep.
Any other entrance that would be here would be for a second means of egress or an emergency access for the police and the fire. And, um, yet again, we would talk to, to both police and fire, and if they would like, we would just put a gate to block the entrance and not have it as a full traffic. But the main entrance is through County Street, which is, again, like mentioned, it's right off the highway.
Yep, yep. So, I guess what would make me feel comfortable, Mark, is if we could, and I, I don't wanna just slap something together, but, some sort of a bylaw that says that any building over 100,000 square feet, or pick a number, is by special permit. Doesn't matter what zone it's in, any building over, and again, we pick some sort of a minimum square footage, and that's by special permit. Just so the planning board and the town has a little bit more control over the development of what goes there, and then I, I feel a lot better about that, is that something that we can get them pretty quick to get something fairly?
Sure.
Simple but effective?
Yeah, we, I mean, basically, could... Again, yeah, you could, um...
add something, maybe a, either a, added to, um, you know, so are you talking about any building or specific types of buildings, such as warehouses or, um,
Industrial.
Industrial buildings, because, you know, because we define these and if you look at the zoning, we have multiple types of industrial uses under the use chart. Um, so.
I mean, I, I'm inclined to say any building in an industrial zone, say, any, any building in an industrial zone over, and, and really, I, I, I think, I guess, a hundred thousand is a good threshold. I mean, that's a pretty big building. But it's still.
You could go bigger.
Well, I mean,
You could say bigger if you wanted to.
Easily. I mean, I think most of the buildings we're looking at, for the warehouse stuff, are a half million square feet or more.
And, and I think if, i- i- if it, to me, where he's, where we don't have an idea what he wants to put here, he's not saying, this is what I want to turn industrial, and this is what I'm going to build. You, you know what I'm saying? So, the reason that I think this is a good idea is because industrial is it's an enormous category, you know, so.
And, and I guess to, to walk back what I said about a hundred thousand, I, I think it would be a hundred thousand square feet in aggregate on a property, so if there were multiple buildings, they wouldn't all be ninety-nine thousand square feet? To, to
Circumvent the, um,
Yeah, secret loophole. So, if we could do something like that, to create it by special permit, to, give the planning board a little bit of control over the situation, I would be more on board with pushing this to town meeting to let the townspeople decide if we were going to rezone it or not.
Okay.
What do you think, Nora?
I, I think we definitely should let the town decide on this.
But should the planning board bring it?
So, just, I'm sorry. Just to understand, if we were to put, let's say, four buildings, each building should be twenty-five thousand, so we don't exceed a hundred thousand? Or, one building cannot exceed one hundred, because you said an aggregate.
No, you, you, you can put a building up that's a hundred thousand, a hundred and one thousand square feet. All that means is, it's going to be permitted through the planning board through a special permit process, which will just be, uh, it's not that it's not going to happen, but it just gives us a little bit more teeth to say, we don't like that, we'd like you to change this. And th- th- this flows a lo-, you know, the special permit process is not a no, it's, we're not saying no building can be over that, it's just saying if you, I think, it's not just to you, it would be any industrial property. Once you start building buildings that are several football fields, that's got to be by special permit, that's an impact on the town. We see buildings in the industrial park up here that they're like black holes of energy, with the amount of water and electricity and stuff that they use, that it's, you know, they are a drain on the town, so for us to be able to say, what's going in there, and we want just to know, to have some control, to, you know, maybe you came in and said, we want a million square foot building, maybe we, they walk it back, we want to do eight hundred thousand square feet. We're not saying you can't put a building up that's a hundred thousand or more. It's just that would trigger the special permit process.
Thank you for the clarification, just because, again, economically speaking, you want to, you know, if, if we're doing,
Yeah.
one building or three buildings, whatever the number is in the future plans, it has to make sense and be economical, and, and I appreciate the clarification, just so I can explain it.
It's not a no, I'm not saying do it, but you can only put up a little tiny bar. What I'm saying is, if we opt to, for this to go to town meeting, to rezone it, we just want a little bit better control when it comes back to us, when you have that plan, to say, we got a tenant, we know what we're going to design now. Alright, let's work with you, that's all.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you very much for the clarification.
So, could I, could I comment on what Michelle said about whether we should be the, um, people to bring this forward?
Yeah.
I believe we should be, and I'll tell you why, because the, we have visited this property in, 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 um, you know, v-, you know,
Historically.
Historically, several times over, and spoke about its, uh, uh, how close it is to one forty and how it is a preferred property, um, to be industrial or commercial. Um, and we have to own the message, you know, I mean, this is, this is, this is like, this board's, like, purview, so I don't think we should say, hey, if you want to zone something, go and, um, you know, go get two hundred signatures. You won't even know how it'll get, how it'll pass, you know what I mean? It may pass and it, it won't, it'll go sideways, so.
And, and I definitely think, you know, in thinking about it, um, with a special permit tied to it as well, uh, makes me feel better about it.
The townspeople inevitably will always have the, um, they'll have the final word on this, so. I don't want to deny them of that, so.
Correct.
What do we need to do tonight, anything?
We're going to let Mark keep working there.
He's busy writing.
Mark's working away, so.
Sorry.
While he's doing that, I want to go through some of the Housing Inventory Questionnaire. We had the Mansfield Housing thing.
I'm sorry, that one last sign thing was a quick one.
Okay.
So.
You got something there, Mark?
Yeah, well, the, the Mansfield, uh, housing survey that went out was, only half of it went out. So, I had passed out before the full survey, I don't know who still has their original copies.
I have it at home.
Okay. But I, I made additional copies for all of you.
Okay. You want to just pass them to Michelle, and we'll pass them around.
Okay.
So, we have, uh, remove signs off premises. To see if the town will vote to remove from section seven point four point six, specific uses by special permits. Uh, special per- permit granting authority is the Board of Appeals. All districts applies to signs not exempt from local regulations by chapter ninety-three of the general laws, and not advertising the premises on which located or the occupant thereof, or the goods and services available thereon must advertise a business commodity or service available in Lakeville, shall not exceed twelve square feet in area, and must be found to be appropriate for the location. Special permit to be limited to a time period of not less than three years and subject to renewal, or take any other action relative thereto. Anybody?
This was well covered in our revised sign by law, so I'm confident in removing this.
Same here.
Okay. So, motion to remove the text as, uh, read. Have a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Two Hs, off the list. I didn't pass these down. Nora, do you remove for Jack there?
Alright, you want to go back?
Yep, go right ahead, Mark.
Before we go. So, um, I was thinking that we would add to the industrial use use chart, industrial buildings greater than one hundred thousand square feet, and then make that you know, uh, only permitted by special, planning board special permit in the, uh, industrial, the regular industrial district, not the industrial B, unless you want to include.
We can include both, just in case something came across in B.
Right.
Right, okay.
Yeah, eh, eh, a hundred thousand in aggregate.
Yep.
Not too long, sorry.
And then we would add kind of a written description to the section in the back, uh, where it has the extra requirements. Industrial buildings greater than one hundred thousand square feet, um, that would be a special permit. Granting authority would be the planning board in the industrial district and the industrial B district. And then it would say, um, uh, special permit would be required for, uh, a building greater than a hundred thousand square feet or a combination of buildings on one lot. Yeah, so.
Um, the only other thing that I was thinking of was, should we add in just a note about the intent would be to control site design, uh, effects on adjacent properties? Just to be clear about what the purpose of the special permit is, or it's not necessary?
I don't think that's necessary, um, I don't think that's necessary.
Okay, um, so if we're to act on this, I mean, I'd like to have council review what we're doing, just to know that the intent, they understand the intent, and that we're doing the right thing.
Yep.
So, I, I move to take action on this special permit process for buildings over one hundred thousand square feet in the industrial and industrial B zones by special permit.
I'll second that.
So, I have a motion in the second to push this towards the town meeting warrant, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And, and, Mr. Iatani, just to, so you understand, through the special permit, that, uh, in thinking about more and the explanation that I give you on that, it would give the planning board the ability to put a condition on that special permit to say, just say a warehouse went in there, and you had loading dock doors facing the residential development and loading dock doors facing the highway. We may put a condition on that development to say loading dock doors facing the residential properties may not be accessed between midnight and six AM. That, that's the, the advantage to the town.
We wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't want to do that in there.
Yeah.
I wouldn't want it in my mind, yeah.
Correct, so that's really what we're trying to do here, it's not to stop you from doing, we're not trying to like, pull a trick on you and say, we'll, we'll do this, but then we'll stop you over there. We just want to give the town some control.
No, thank you, I, I appreciate that explanation, and, and again, we want to be reasonable for our, to our neighbors.
Yep.
So, so we wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't do something like you would say. And it makes sense for a board to put conditions such as these to make sure that nothing gets done that way.
Um, you should also make a motion to submit the zoning map.
Yep.
Right.
Um, so I move to submit the zoning changes for, what are we calling this parcel, something?
Um, yeah, no, it's, it's a hundred and, yeah, it's not identified specifically except by the map. So, the map will be what will be along with the written article, these will both be what will be voted and approved by town meeting.
Okay, so I move to see if the town would vote to amend the Lakeville zoning map by rezoning a hundred and fifty-five point four acres located on County Street as shown on the attached map entitled Zoning Amendment of the Plan of Lakeville, Mass from the residential district to industrial district. Have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you, sir.
So, the dreaded housing production plan, plan.
It's not dreaded.
Uh, so, Mark had provided us with the Mansfield housing plan. Um, Michelle had suggested that we get a couple more options or questions that maybe were from towns more suited, uh, or more, were more similar to Lakeville. So, did anybody get a chance, or did everybody get a chance to go through and make comparisons to the Mansfield one? Or say the, the Harvard one? Uh, we have Plymouth.
I did, and, and, Mr. Chairman, I really feel, after looking at Stowe, uh, Harvard, and going back and looking at Mansfield, that Mansfield has more application in Stowe or Harvard does.
Yeah, the other ones seem to be more demographically concerned about the, the age in this rather than what you think about the kind of housing we should have in the town. I think the Mansfield one was far away, much better.
Michelle, did you have any specific questions? If we were to say, adopt the Mansfield plan, and then take a plug or a question or two, or several questions out of one of those other ones to make sure that, uh, demographically or, uh, socio-economically, something else was included that's not in the Mansfield plan?
Um, well, so this, this Mansfield that he just gave is a bit longer, so I'm just kind of going through it right now and just looking.
Well, Michelle, soon that, Peter, did you have any, uh?
No, I mean, um, what, what, Mark, what's your recommendation, that we stick with this, like, untouched, or do you think it's overkill, or?
Well, I, I think it's good in the fact that it, it really does try and find out what people's opinions are about housing. It may not be housing that's representative of a lot of Lakeville, but it's representative, it's housing that's representative of housing that's found throughout the Commonwealth, right? And, um, in, in smaller towns like, like Bill that have developed differently, as well as bigger communities. So, I think it's good to ask the questions. I think we probably will know what, or have a sense of what the majority, like, if we read through each of these questions, might end up being, but I think it's, it's, it's really important to ask those kind of questions. And some of the demographic questions in, in the other surveys, um, really are kind of, you know, and what's kind of home do you live in? And do you plan to move? And all those kinds of questions really are, aren't really, uh,
They're not constructive towards.
Towards what you're trying to do, so, uh, which is find out what people's attitudes are toward a variety of housing types, and, um, and so I, I think that the Mansfield one is, is a lot more comprehensive.
So, and you have the ability to say no on any of these questions if you don't like it?
Yes, yes, and if, if some people just.
Do you know how many Mansfield, uh, surveys were completed?
Um, they did them this year. Between, it says right here, July one and August first.
Do you know how many people took the survey?
No, no, I don't, I, I have no
I was just curious.
Other information, I can find out.
And I'm also.
Less than ten percent, I guess.
A lot of papers here, so we're all.
No, it's, uh, fire started.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, we go to Mansfield.
So, I mean, I mean, it's, uh,
I think we beat this horse enough.
Yeah, I, I think that it's a little on the wrong side, but people can stop and hit submit if they hit the wall, and they will. Uh, because surveys, uh, people, uh, people, um, start to, like, you know, zone out after like question seven or eight.
But the questions themselves are actually rather simple.
Yep.
It's, yeah, so.
I find it interesting that in Stowe, for the most part, there was four, between four hundred and twenty and four hundred and fifty-two responses.
That seems a lot.
Yeah.
It'll be less than ten percent, is all I'll say to you. It'll be less than ten. I've done these before, it'll be less than ten percent.
We're good.
Yep, do, I don't want to cut you off, Michelle, I know you put some effort into looking further. I, I do think that with this full packet, this, you, you, there are, I think, at least nine more questions in the one that we got tonight from Mansfield, from the original one we got, which is better. Eh, you know, I, I'd probably say I disapprove on a bunch of the questions, but I think that's effective.
Yeah, I mean, I definitely, I just want to see, I guess, more focus on senior housing. Then, I think there's only like one, I just kind of went through it quickly just to see.
And that, Mark, that has been, uh, a topic
Mm-hmm.
on every master plan, it's more senior housing. a topic on every master plan. It's more senior housing. So, you know, maybe that is something we could add another question or two about either age restricted or some sort of a related to senior housing type of question.
Yep.
Well, actually, Mark, you have on the main survey, question number five has to do with senior housing. I would move that back to the section that is specific to senior housing or adult retirement communities.
All right, I'll talk to Serphead about, maybe there's a couple other questions that they've they can, they've used in other places they can add in and
All right, so I'm gonna go ahead and
A lot of those multi-unit questions are kind of extra, like we probably don't need as many multi-units and maybe more in regards, I don't know.
Yeah, I could agree with that. So I move that we advance with generally the Mansfield Housing Production Plan survey questions, but with the caveat that Mark asked that if Serphead could add a couple more age-restricted housing questions in addition to what they have already. And I'll, I'll leave that
It doesn't have to come back to us, right?
No, I'll leave that up to your discretion, Mark.
Okay.
So I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We've got the minutes. Did you have any correspondence, Mark?
There's, there's a bunch of just general notices that we received from other cities and towns. The only thing of significance was but it's on the other side of Taunton. They did get a application for a large message board sign along 495 of ninety feet high.
Ninety?
Yes.
Where is that?
It is on Joseph Quinn Road.
Wait, where did you say? Off of 495?
Yes, off of 495.
It's in Taunton.
In Taunton, yes. So ninety feet high utilizing the entire square footage. They're asking for several different things. Variances for shorter refresh rates than twenty seconds, to be illuminated at all times.
How does that impact on Lakeville?
What?
It has no
It has no effect on Lakeville, but it was, it's the largest kinda and you will notice it when you drive down 495.
Who gets to oppose something like that? What? Who gets to oppose something like, just a town of Lakeville?
Yeah, yeah, Butters, obviously, if, if let's say 495 was the town line and another, whatever town was on the other side.
People that'll get the shadow flicker from the lights blinking?
Yeah, yeah, they could, they, the other town could object on behalf of the citizens and comment at the, at the board meeting. So, but it's pretty far away. We won't see it.
I don't know. Ninety feet.
And that's it?
Yeah.
Okay. So the only other thing I have is Michelle had asked about putting some planning board goals, do goal setting. She had put together a little thing. I'm not gonna go through the whole thing tonight, but I guess I just wanna leave everybody with if we wanted to look forward to, look back at the master plan, look at going forward between like, just say a one-year period between now and September of next year, what we want to achieve so we can actually set some goals to make sure we're staying on track with what either the master plan has or zoning changes that we wanna get in there. Like, you know, tonight we worked on the business and industrial lot coverage stuff and removing some of those things that we're gonna continue to work on. That should be on the list. So I just wanna leave everybody tonight from when we leave the meeting to come back for the next meeting and, Mark, maybe we put that on there for the agenda for the next meeting if we have time for it. That, you know, just to have a constructive discussion about what we want to achieve in the next six months to a year.
Yeah, if people either submit like ideas that we could, I could type up, you know, like Michelle did and, you know, maybe edit those and people could submit a few more, then we could combine them all into one document to send around to the board so we can kinda all have a chance to think about it before we go through the list. You know, we'll send it out the packet.
Sounds good. Everybody on board with that? That said, if there's no other business?
Mark, just one thing. I should have at our next meeting, which is the 22nd, right?
Yep.
Yeah, an update from Serphead on where we are and how they've calculated affordable housing.
Is that through the lot coverage thing or is that through?
It's through the lot coverage.
Okay.
They're also detailing, I talked with Bob and Taylor today quite extensively. They're detailing out for me how they calculated the land versus land that's not developable, lake and all that, and also giving you a list of the housing that they are counting for today as affordable housing. But right now we stand at six point one percent.
But that's not land coverage. That's this
Can't answer that because I didn't give any backup.
Subsidized housing inventory is six point one percent of when you say, that's buildings, Mark, or units.
Two hundred and fifty
Yeah, that's units.
Yeah, two hundred and fifty units. But this is also based on an old census, so they're updating it to current census. And detailing it out for me on how they calculated the land part is what I have the question.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good. We'll look at that update. So motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.